Want you to know me here and I've been, I finally get it right.
This is new? May they?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. From Anderson.
How come you use this?
Can you put this in a binder?
One, two, three, four. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Linda, you have the record of attendance. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone?
None.
Good. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Business, FCM Board Meeting 2016. So, we, we're here to decide whether we're going to do these, work with these financially? The, are we here to make decisions on whether we're going to support these financially? Okay, so, the motion moved and seconded that we don't support this one financially at this time? What's that?
Is that the bid one, or is that?
This is the FCM.
That's one Rick Allright presented.
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's, um... Yeah, it's a fair cost and... Yes, mhm. We need microphones if we're gonna... Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, I kinda agree with councillor McCausick. I think it would be a great idea to have FCM here and have some of their executive here, but I think the cost compared to some of the, some of the events that we're trying to bring in over the next couple of years, I know next year the cost is gonna be about the same what the Canadian National Old Timers Baseball Championships are gonna be bringing in, and I think the cost is, for the baseball championships, is about half of what they're looking for, for the FCM, and we're gonna get 500 people here next year with the baseball championships, and they're looking for $5,000, and I think this one is double, is this about 12,000, I think Mr. Allright said?
It is.
I think there's plenty of opportunities. We work with FCM, and I think there's plenty of other opportunities to work with UNSM. They come here about every three or four years, maybe put our, all our eggs in that basket. We get 170 room nights out of that, times probably three, so we get 500 room nights. The room nights aren't that big on this one, I don't think. It's nice to have some kind of national exposure, but I think we can do better things with our dollars at this time, especially in lieu of the Canadian National Old Timers Baseball Championship. I know that the Mariners, even though they didn't win the Royal Bank Cup bid this year, they're going to ask for, or put in bids for other hockey championships coming to Yarmouth. I know we're looking for Nova Scotia Music Week for three years in a row, so if we can build on those three events instead of this one, I think for the cost factor, and put that money back into grants to organizations, I think we'll be better served.
Okay, does anybody disagree? Did you wanna speak to it? Because I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I'm, I think we are too. What I was gonna suggest, though, we are looking at the 2018 Communities in Bloom National Convention here. I know Sandy, you spoke, I guess, with Raymond. He sent me an email, and Madeline@FCM, which was good, thank you very much for that. But we're looking at that. I'd like to see us, your worship, down the road in future budgets, this is more for the CAO, to look maybe at the idea of putting up a line in our budget called conference contingency, you know, so when we do have an opportunity for something like this, we're not kinda caught on awares, you know, even if we build it up and, you know, maybe if it's only 10,000 a year, or 15,000, I don't know what the CAO thinks, but I think it's something we could look at. But I have to agree with the others. It's not a, it's not a, we are, your worship, looking at events now more than ever, and it would be nice to have that little line that the CAO could draw, and, you know, without having to rejiggle, you know, sidewalks and sand and other things we have to do, so I'm definitely, I'm supportive of the motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? You want to, I know...
Yeah, just, we do have a line in our budget for, for events, that some years we haven't specified when we know there's an event coming. So, for instance, if we, if we bid for and got an event in 2016, that number would reflect that, that event. Like last year, it was already spent, basically, the time the budget was, was approved with the Redwood Cup and other events. This year, there is an amount in there, isn't, because we don't have any major events this year.
Good, okay. Morning, deputy.
I was just gonna say that I agree, that I think we can spend the money on better events than the FCM this year.
Good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. We did. Nova, Nova Scotia Music Week, same thing. Need a motion.
Oh, well, I'll second Phil's motion, I know he's gonna go with it.
Okay.
And just to speak on the motion, your worship, I was in conversation a couple of times last week with Neil McKenzie with YASTA, and as councils may or may not be aware, Queen's County has put a bid in as well, and they're quite anxious, and I know Neil is getting, anting up quite a bit. I was a little bit disappointed to learn after our meeting that Kim Anderson had not been discussed, had not been talked to by the events guy there, Rick Allright, did not talk to her, but Neil has picked up the ball there, and the problem with any proposal, it has to be sexy, and you have to have a link, and that's what we're, I know Neil and his team is struggling on that, and I'm really pleased that YASTA also, or Neil, or whoever has put, has got Jeff Claremont involved. Jeff has proven himself to be really good, and he's gonna be the coordinator if we are successful in the bid, so whatever we can do to support this, I think would be excellent for our community.
Councillor McCausick?
Thank you, your worship. My question will be from Jeff. Jeff, I read your email yesterday. It read that you had some concerns, and your concerns are very valid of what I, what I had read. I don't know if my other colleagues had a chance to read it, I'm sure they did. We're looking at 20,000 upfront, 20,000 in kind, that's a total of 40,000, and there's probably more there that we haven't seen, haven't really read, really between the lines. My question to you, as our CAO and our advisor on this, I'd like to know, from your email that you sent, do you have some concerns, and do we have the money? Even though it's in kind, it's still money, so can you explain it to me so I'm comfortable voting on this?
CAO?
Thank you. I guess, the, it's in kind to Music Week because they want $20,000 in cash, right? But they want other things as well that have a cash value, but they want them provided in kind. But as I, as I pointed out in 2011, three quarters of those in kind things cost us cash, so they, they are real costs that we need to budget for. So, that's one concern, is that your motion to support would include not only the, to support the, the cash contribution, but also to pay for up to $20,000 in in kind. Now, Rick did confirm that he does have one corporate sponsor on, but there are no other municipal supporters on at this time, so you'd wanna go out to the, to the other municipal partners and see what kind of a partnership you could establish. So, my concern was only that you know the total value of the commitment that you're making, and not be surprised when, when, say, in the 2016 budget, instead of 20,000, we're budgeting maybe 30,000 for that event.
Right. When I read in the email, if I'm not mistaken, there was 5,000 that the municipality of Yarmouth, I think, gave, and 2,500 that a girl had gave. That's a total of $7,500, so they're short another 10 grand, so, well, probably more than 10, $13,000, so that's $33,000, even though it's sums in kind, it's still money regardless. It's still cash, I count that as cash.
It's money on our end.
That's right.
And those numbers were from 2011.
It, it seems to me, I don't know, before, and I, I've never had the opportunity to put these things together or anything like that, but to me, if I'm going to sell something to anybody, it seems to me I would have a know that there's other organizations that are willing to put up before you make these presentations. You don't do it on a whim saying, "Well, I'm hoping that I can get this and get that." It's sort of a, it's, it's backwards to me. It, it sorta should've been, okay, well, there's this Music Week coming up at this time, we have two months maybe to give presentations before we get a good feel from councils that they're gonna get, get on board. I don't know how we can convince, or where we should be telling people with these, come up with these ideas and looking for, to house these conventions, whatever. It's not at the 11th or 12th hour after we set budgets and stuff. It's just like we're gonna be discussing here at the next one, this other program, that's the Buster's Program, that it's, to me, it's another one, that's, it's a late application, no matter how you look at it, it's, it's very good, but I'm not gonna get on that topic till after, but it's, it's still late. This here, to me, is, is, it's a good program because we've already done it a couple of times. I'm just kinda a little bit wary that it's gonna cost the taxpayers, even though there's, there's, there's a, there's a benefit to this, it could be, or there could not be. It all depends. I mean, I'm not saying I'm not supportive of it, but it's a shame that it's not done a different way, that we would know that, yes, we are in negotiations with these other organizations, and we have funding, but we don't. So, my question to you is, do you have concerns other than that? And that's all I'll ask.
CAO?
Yeah, my, my only other concern about it is that this is a YASTA project, and we do have a formula or a, an agreement by which we fund YASTA, and this, as well as some other events that get brought forward, they deviate drastically from that formula. What's happening here is they're asking us to make the full commitment, and then I guess it's up to us to go and find the partners, to mitigate our costs, where anything else that goes on in YASTA, the money goes in, and it, and it gets allocated to, within the budget. So, this is, this is off-formula and puts the majority of the burden on the town. And the argument goes, well, the town's the beneficiary. Well, that doesn't wash, because the people who work in the businesses, the people who own the businesses, the people who benefit from having these events are from the entire county, from the entire region, so I'm very concerned about what this says to, to YASTA, or how this approach is, is coming from YASTA, in dealing with this particular segment of their, of their operation. It ought to be more balanced, and it ought not be on us to find the partners.
Yeah, I'll turn around.
Shut my mic up. But, yeah, and there, there we have it. Now, you know, we can, we can sit around this table, and we can make, you know, we can make adjustments on the fly, but that's not, not really a good way to run businesses. Some businesses are successful doing that, and other businesses are not so successful. We have to lead by example. So, I guess, the proper and right thing to do is, we can't let this go on, so what we should do is call in the new manager, call in this Mr. Wright, that is, the person that is doing these proposals and that, and perhaps, you know, make it clear that this is not, this is not the norm that we usually do things. We've got, we could've got seriously, seriously caught up in financial woes from the, from the cup challenge, the Hockey Cup Challenge, at one or two times, but we're lucky we didn't. I mean, 'cause there was a, a cost, if they didn't make any money, if they ran over, over their cost. I see some, some not good news in that in the paper, that they had $130,000 surplus, or whatever it was, if I read it right, and, and blah, 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 and, but, we could've been on the hook for a hell of a lot of money if it didn't work out right. Money that, if you can well remember, that none of us knew, that we were on the hook for. So, we have to do our due diligence there, and I thank you for your, your caution, and I think it should be a heed, a heed to, and I think we should call in the new manager, call in Mr. Wright. I'm not saying that this is not a bad program, but I think these, these, these two, the new manager and Mr. Wright should be aware of how this has to play out from, from now on. That's all I have to say. Thank you, your worship.
Councillor Langel?
Thank you. My only concern with this, I mean, I'm supporting it too, but I'm supporting it bleeding, biting my tongue. I don't like how it was handled. I, I don't like how this whole was put together. I was involved, as councillor Mooney was, with the original Music Week back in, in 2010, when we were involved putting it together, and that was one of the reasons, your worship, why last week I stressed the importance of Kim Anderson, because she was part of that puzzle, and she was critical in the putting together the proposal. The in kind, she did all that herself, and there is various ways to calculate the in kind. In kind is everything from people who are working on the event, to costing them out, to the venues, to the use of private vehicles, to whatever, whatever, and Kim had the whole thing done for that three-year period, and what really I'm disappointed in is that she was not involved in the, in the bid process, and I mean, and that to me would've been a logical thing. I'm disappointed that the other units weren't brought on board earlier, and I think the CAO hits the nail on the head. This was kind of just put together. Now, we all knew for years that Music Week will have our kick at the can. Music Week made it very clear, when we finished the last year in Yarmouth, that they did not Yarmouth again for three years, and they were very clear to us, do not bid for three years. In fact, our previous council, Phil and Janine, I'll remember Kim sitting right here telling us that. We ain't gonna have a kick at the can for three years, but in the end of the three-year period, they're gonna look at us, and Music Week loved Yarmouth for a venue. It was the favorite, best venue they've ever had, simply because all of the key venues were within walking distance. So, now we have a deadline in two days, it's, the proposal's gotta be on Friday, and we're at the nth hour, and councillor McCausick's down on the money, too. I mean, it's a sloppy proposal, and I'm disappointed in it, I really am, because this is a major premier event that brought a lot of money into this community, and a lot of people, and a lot of attention, and I'm, I'm disappointed in how it was handled, and I think councillor McCausick's right. I, I think some, either councillor Dennis who sits on YASTA, or somebody should say, okay, what, what's going on here? Like, if we're gonna put a proposal in for something major like this, let's get our ducks in a row and bring the key characters in. You just can't sit in an office in isolation and say, "We're gonna do this," wrong. You gotta bring the people who were involved in the back, previous proposal, and what did you do right, what did you do wrong? Because there were some things we made mistakes in Music Week in year one. Year two, we fixed it. Year two, we made mistakes, we fixed them in year three. So, we've got to have the right party, so that's why it's so critical to do that.
I love it. Okay, councillor Mooney?
And, and I agree with what everybody's saying. I, I support the, the money amount, but I, what I would like to see is a better partnership or collaboration with the other municipal units. Like Jeff said, or the CAO said, if you go to the Grand Hotel, or you go to all the other venues, where do most of the people live? Most of them live in the municipality or the district of Argyle. $20,000 investment, you know, I think from the town of Yarmouth's perspective is a lot of money. It is a lot of money. When you look at our grants to organizations, it's, you know, one quarter of it. But for the time of year, that this event's being held in November, you know, our hotels aren't full, hockey season's just starting, so I think this is, it fills that gap for our tourism industry and the restaurants, but we need a better collaboration, hopefully with the new manager at YASTA and Mr. Allright, that they can work through those kinks, because we need to work with our other municipal units. If you look at the population reports, you know, we're the smallest municipal unit out of the three. We have the least amount of assessment and the least amount of taxation ability, and, and we have other units that are, are better off than us financially and, and with wherewithal, and they're gonna reap the benefits because their people are in here working in our town. I, I agree, you know, the $20,000 is, is, we know that's comparable to what we paid, I think, for the last year that, that it was here. The in kind, I think, is a little different, and I don't know how they split up the, I'm just looking at it here, with the complimentary hotel rooms and shuttle services. I don't know how that's gonna be proposed in kind, I don't know how that works, but that could be something explained, but it's, I agree with it in principle, but we have to have better collaboration with YASTA and our other municipal partners when it comes to putting in bids, because Rick and Neil should've talked to the municipality of Argyle and the municipality of the district of Yarmouth at the same time.
Thank you. Deputy?
Morning.
Good morning.
I support the, the words of my fellow councillors. I had concerns yesterday when I was reading the email also. Two questions, Jeff, are, do you think the other councillors are going to, other councils are gonna respond, what you're feeling there, and secondly, sponsors of different events, like different firms, businesses in the, in our community, do they, if there is a $2,000 or $2,500 sponsorship of a certain event, does that go towards the in kind? What, I don't, 'cause I know in the past, like, the pharmacy presented an award, I think as perhaps did other, as did Philip's Families Pharmacy, but, so I, I'm just not sure of some of that. I, thank you.
CAO?
I can't answer the sponsorship question clearly. I quickly read through the 2011 contract yesterday, looking for specifically what was in the in kind list, because there are lots of in kind things that are done. I mean, the hundreds of volunteers is an in kind, but that isn't actually counted in the in kind commitment, which Rick or whoever's bidding for this event will have to specify what those in kind items are. And one thing that Rick is adamant about, and it came up during the three years of Music Week before, is, is that they, they only wanna pay a certain amount for Mariner Center, and that the last couple of years did not pay the full bill, so what they want as one of the in kinds is a cap, basically, on the, on the Mariner Center cost, and that, that, the balance of that would have to come through the in kind. We also employed a person for eight to 10 weeks. I think it was, well, I won't get into who it was, but we had a person employed for eight to 10 weeks leading up to the event as things got much busier, and that was in the in kind list, and of course, that salary is, is paid with cash. So, I didn't look specifically at the sponsorship section to see if there was a, what, to remind myself, I guess, what the rules were around that.
Go ahead.
Other question related, Music Week itself, the business of Music Week, what kind of financial commitment do they make as far, what, what do they bring to the table besides, and we provide the venue and up to $40,000 of cash and in kind?
I don't know their total budget. I, I don't know if, if we even knew that. We could ask the question in terms of what, what Music Nova Scotia lays out. I don't know if Ken would remember that at all. One of, one of the questions that you asked, your first question was about the other municipal, municipal units, and really, I've had no discussion with Ken or Ella, or anyone with those municipalities. My question yesterday to Rick was to find out if he had, in fact, and he hasn't. He only referenced what they, what they contributed before, so, you know, they're, they're good partners on most things we do, but I can also tell you from history, when we make the, when we make the big commitment, agree to take it all on, and then later go asking for partners, we're less successful than when we sit down together and make a decision together.
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship, and I, I think Jeff answered the questions, and I'm gonna try to pick councillor Langel's brain a little bit, because he was involved in, in a couple of them. Is, is that how it worked last time? Did we do the initial cash layout, and then we went next to municipal partners for help afterwards, or were you all together at one time?
Go ahead.
Uh, no, we got, my memory, and I can be corrected by you or nanny, my memory was, and Jeff, you can help me out here too, it seems to me, when it came to us, it was a package. Kim had a, a package together, and I vaguely remember that she went herself to each of the sister units. She made a presentation on behalf of Music Week. Yeah, she, yeah, remember you guys, we did pitches, and you and I went to Argyle with Kim, and we gave the pitch to Argyle.
But just Tommy Wise, if I can interject on that, the first year that we had it, Kim secured all the financial commitments ahead of time. In the subsequent years, we were, we made the commitment, and Kim went with you.
Yeah.
But that was after we had made the commitment.
Yeah, but we were pretty secure that we had those, the, the in kind and those external financials that Jim is mentioning, those were pretty, well, those ducks were all in a row, Jim, before it got to that proposal stage, so we knew exactly what we were going at. To answer the question on how much Music Week puts in, they basically see it as a break even. I mean, that's my understanding, it was a break even. They don't wanna make money, but they also are not in a position to lose money. They do put certain amounts in here, like staffing and that sort of thing, and they do expend money with their people coming into the area. The budget is fairly large, and I don't know, Phil, it seems to me it's close to half a million, if I'm not mistaken, and I may be blowing smoke here, but I believe it was fairly sizable, when you look at the whole event and the numbers, but the spinoff was incredible. I mean, it was huge. Goes for a whole, almost a week.
And that whole week, the whole town's hopping.
It's hopping. Oh, it, it is hopping. It is, it is probably one, other than the Redwood Cup, and other than, and even more so than the World Junior A. I mean, I'll tell you, this, this place is happening during that whole time. It's, it's quite incredible. It's an incredible event. It's, as I said, it's unfortunate that we didn't get our ducks in a row better, you know, but, but I mean, we may have to do a little bit of pushing there.
Yeah, just here, your worship, it says, industry output, then figure's gonna bring in to the profit about 1.3 million, and I think that was basically what Events Nova Scotia said to us when we did the original, when we did the original proposal. So, Rick, you might have that from Events Nova Scotia, but that's pretty well right on the, right on the line.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Your worship, my, my concerns, I would suggest they're valid concerns, and all I, all I'm doing is, I, I'm in support of it, but all, all I'm doing is, is making sure for, for the new manager, the new manager's sake, this is not on, on him. This is not on anybody. We're not saying it's anybody, but in the future, when these propose, when they look and find that these, these concerts or whatever they are out there in the future, we have to, they have to notify us, you know, beforehand, and the other municipal units, get up, get their packages together, get the information. This is an exercise for them to do, to bring it to us, so we don't have to go here for about a half hour trying to figure out why they do it the way that they do it. So, I guess, in all fairness to them, it's, it's an exercise that they gotta do a little bit better. That's all, your worship.
Okay, so we're ready. I'm, I'm in support, too, and CAO and I just, we're gonna have those conversations and, and make sure that it goes the right way. Question's been called. All those in favor and where the...
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. So, we're supporting Music Week. Okay, Buster's Program. We got all the information, and it is through the ARC. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, I, I've read the information. Yeah, it, it is through the ARC. The ARC has already received a grant through, grants through organizations. This, to me, is nothing more than a late application. We all sit around this table, and we said, "Look, we can't entertain late applications," because what it does, it opens up Pandora's Box for other great organizations and other, other places that come before council after, after we've already gave grants to organizations. This, it's a good idea, but it's an idea that's come late, and if, if we do this, and it's only fair, I won't be supporting it, I'll be right up front, and it's only, it's because of the reasons why I'm, what I'm saying. It's a late application, we have a, a, this here was a spinoff from All Hands On Deck organization that came, it's one of, one of the flip charts that was put on there. The people got together and said, "Would it be nice to have Buster's?" A lot of other things, a lot of good things come out of there. This, this is one of them. It's a shame that they didn't get their, their, their paperwork and everything together a little earlier so they could apply for the grants, the organizations. They look for, from what I'm reading, they look for a place, somebody to sponsor... look for, from what I'm reading, they look for a place, somebody to sponsor grants from nonprofit organizations. They found the ARC, but the ARC has already received its, its grant portion from grants to organizations. The, the information that I read on the internet, the, the person that was spearheading one of them is, it's a great idea, but he, he doesn't choose to go looking for sponsorships or whatever. He thought it might be a good idea for you, your worship, perhaps to go up and down Main Street, or whoever, look for sponsors and stuff. And that, that's fair, if, if one chooses to do that. But to me, it's a late application. It should be treated as a late application. We sat around this table. We all agreed that late applications, it's not the norm, the thing what we should do. Maybe next year, if they apply for grants to organizations, I, I'm sure the councils around, the councils around the table will support it. I would be one that would. But at this time, I, I can't support this, because it is what it is. It's a late application. It's a great idea, but at this time, no.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Langel.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. And I read all the correspondence. I went down and I met with Sandy Feevins at the ARC. I wanted to get a real handle on what was going on. And the thing that concerns me is Sandy made it very clear to me that the ARC is not in a position to supervise these students. They do not have the resources. They do not have the money. They will not be supervising unless this secondary grant comes through. They have applied, and it was in your email, I think, your worship, there was a mention made of a secondary grant. The ARC was planning to do an outreach program. They were hoping to, this year, hire, I believe Jeremy Watkins for 20 weeks, and the, 20 hours a week, I'm sorry, to go out and do outreach at the Cape Frisbee and to do some stuff, maybe, you know, in Argyle, and in the county, and in the town. So the intention, when this proposal came in from Mr. Feevins, was, is that Jeremy would take these two students under his wing. But right now, from a staff point of view, if that grant does not come through, then what will happen is they cannot supervise the students, and the two positions will be lost. They just can't do it. This disturbs me a bit as well, because, as we all know, with these, these money from ERDT, the money's there, the two students are there, and some other group could have used those other two students. So, and I don't know how the pecking order works. I, I can't support it. I, I see this as a late application for funding. It's coming in the door, and we, we pretty well, all around this table, kind of agreed that, you know, that extra few shekels we put aside was intended for small, little donations, or as a contingency, if all of a sudden some group comes running in at the last minute, has a real good event that needs a couple thousand dollars. I love the idea, and in talking with Sandy, the ARC supports the idea, but it's just a little late off the mark for this year. I asked her when she would hear about funding on the other program that would fund the 20 hours a week, and she said that that, she was told initially it wouldn't be till July. However, they have assured her that they're going to try to move it up into June. But even so, the timing is all at a whack here, because technically, these students should be starting now. They've given them an extension, and without somebody to supervise them, I really have an issue. You know, it's a real concern, because she made it very, very, very clear to me, she does not have the manpower. It's just her and James up there. That's all they have in volunteers, and she doesn't have the time or the manpower to, to put together this. Not only is it putting it together, she pointed out, but scripting what they're going to do, and that's another issue as well. So I, I can't support it for that basis, because there was a concern there.
Thank you. Councillor?
I kind of agree with councillor McCausick. It's a great idea. I think it's something that, that should have been discussed during the grants to organizations process. We moved the process up to January this year to get all the organizations plenty of opportunity to discuss things that are going to happen around the boat and things that can enhance our community. I think this is, like councillor Langel said, I, I was more concerned about the supervision part than anything else, and having, having the individuals on, on Main Street or wherever else without any real, real supervision. I think this is something that we put in for next year's grant to organizations. We build it into the, building into the funding mechanism that we give the ARC already. You know, there's going to have to be, you know, you can talk to Phil de Mil, you can talk to, there's a number of organizations you can talk to that, yeah, that, that this, this could work out. But, and, and the other thing is, is doing it this way, is, is it gives groups or other opportu, groups or other organizations an opportunity to come in and say, well, maybe I won't go in January to fill out the grants to organizations. I'll wait until April or May, because I know I'll get full funding for, for an idea or for a proposition. So this kind of puts people at a disadvantage, because we, not everybody, I don't think there's a group or individual that got full funding in grants to organizations, unless, except for the taxation part, right? And I don't think there's a group that got full funding. So maybe if I want my full funding, I'll take my chances and come in in May or June to do this. But councillor McCausick hit it right on the head. This is, it's a good idea. If you want to do it, you want to do it right, and let's do it, and we can do it next year.
Go ahead.
Just a sidebar, I forgot, your worship, and talking to Sandy, the amount per student is not 2,900, it's not 2,900 total. There was an error. She doesn't know where that number came from. The actual cost per student is $1,093, when everything's factored in with the dollar value. So, and that was another one that put a flag up, like, where did this 2,900? And she couldn't figure out where the residual $700 was, kind of a thing, and I don't know whether it was.
Yeah, he, he had that in one of his emails.
He had it in one of his emails as an amount, but she said it was not an accurate amount. It was $1,093 when all the benefits are added in CPPEI and employee contribution, but it's moot, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to. I, I really feel that it's something they should look at for next year, and that's something we could work on.
So I, I have no problem waiting till next year, but it was, it was a community member that didn't, he just didn't, wasn't aware of the grants thing, which is fair, because, and with all good intentions and everything else. So I, I, I agree with the supervision part, and I did speak to Greg. If we have to wait till next year, we have to wait till next year, but it's a good, it's a good idea.
So you spoke to Greg?
I, I spoke to him. I didn't say, I didn't say what, whether there would be support or not, just the concerns with, you know, the, the timing and everything.
And I think there's an opportunity, your worship, to even build on that.
Yeah.
You know, if we can go out and get funding, or, or one of the groups can go get funding from a provincial government or a federal government entity, there's an opportunity to not only have those two, but have other events here in the town of Yarmouth or the municipality. So maybe this is one of those things that we should get YASTA involved in. This is a, this is one of those experiential tourism ideas, right? So this is an opportunity for YASTA and Rick Allright and Neil, the new general managers, to get involved in this. And this is going to keep people here, if it keeps them here for an extra day, because they want to see a magic shower or busters or, or bubbles in the fountain. Man, let's go for it.
Good. Was there a motion?
I make a motion that we, we.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we refer this probably to next year's funding, the grants to organizations, and not accept the proposal. Not, not accept the funding.
Motion you want to make? I don't know.
Well, he can, he can make it.
I'll.
Yeah, it's a little awkward motion. It's a yes/no motion. I think the first motion should be, number one, that we reject, that we re, reject the application or request from Mr. Feevins at this time. And then a second motion should be, refer for budget consideration for next year.
I'll second that motion.
So the first motion, then make a second motion if you want to put it in budget. But we don't really have a budget request for next year, so it would be a moot issue. So to me, just turn the darn, darn thing down, and it's over with, you know, and then if Buddy wants to come back with a proposal for next year, let her rip. So I'll make that motion that we reject the proposal from Mr. Feevins for the 2014.
I second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Clements Avenue Multi-Use Trail. CAO. I think that's you.
That's me. Yeah, so we were able to, based on the discussion, it can be the whole, we were able to go away and find that the amount of funding necessary to do the entire project as it was, as it was tendered with the paving option. And so the recommendation from the engineer is attached to the agenda. Let me just bring it up here.
Just here.
It, it is, no, no. It was attached to the agenda, and it says that tenders were invited, were advertised on provincial procurement website. The recommendation is different with the, with the paving option in. So it's recommended that the contract be awarded to Aberdeen Paving Limited in the amount of $247,587.40 plus HST.
So, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, councillor.
So Jeff, I, I read the email, so you're comfortable with the monies and everything? Of course, you have to be, that you found. It's, it's a, you, you talked very positive on doing it now rather than waiting and going through the same, same process. We would have to do the grading, the, and, and the gravel and everything down. It's, it's more cost-efficient to do it now. You looked, you found the figures, you found the money, so you're recommending that we do it?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried.
That's a fine one. Jeff on that.
Whoops, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. The, how long will it take to complete? I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that, but it certainly will be done this construction season, now that it's, it's been awarded. Expect they'll be able to mobilize within, within a few weeks and get it done before the summer's over, I would expect.
Good.
Good. Okay. Build Canada Fund application for ferry terminal.
Yes, your worship. We received correspondence from the Infrastructure Secretariat. There is still no intake of applications under the Build Canada Fund, but they, they are asking for three projects from every municipality. And we have previously identified, identified two sewer projects, but we all know that, you know, with, if everything's successful with the ferry, that the terminal will need to be replaced. That's a commitment that we've made. The Build Canada Fund is a, is a significant capital fund of the federal government, and it's, it's worthwhile to put this one on as our third project, so that if that is the vehicle through which the federal government chooses to help us with that project, we open the door for that possibility. So the recommendation would be that you pass a motion to add the, the replacement of the ferry terminal as a capital project on our Build Canada Fund list.
We have one question.
Moved and seconded.
For discussion, yeah. For discussion? I got a question on the Build Canada Fund. So we put it as our third project, and we know that after this year, that the terminal will be owned by three municipal units. Is it incumbent on us, or do you think that we should be in partnership with, and does the Build Canada Fund do partnerships with different municipal governments? So I'm saying, because I know, and, and we've, we saw the, we saw our list here, when Mr. Ernst did his overview on what's going to be his, his, priorities over the next 20 years, are we going to be taking monies from a sewer project or a street project that could be, that could be fully funded by the town of Yarmouth, or are we going to be using our monies to, all our monies solely to, to build the ferry terminal by ourselves? Because we know that in another year or two, we're going to have municipal partners.
No. I, I've copied the other two CAOs on that information that I sent to council, and I've already heard back from one saying that they will take it to their council to include that on their list as well. So what's happening at this point is, the Infrastructure Secretariat is trying to get their, trying to gather some, some preliminary data on how big, how big of a list there is within the municipalities, how big the projects are, what are the projects. The actual intake hasn't started yet, but when that application goes in, it should go in as one from the three municipal units, not the town of Yarmouth.
Yeah. And I know councillor Langel.
Don't let me do a follow-up. I know you had your light on ahead of me, but you're going to let me do a follow-up.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, and I think the Build Canada Fund or the federal government would look more favorable on a grant application with three municipal units name on it than they would for one single municipality. So that's the only concern I had, is, is I didn't want to short-change the citizens of the town of Yarmouth when this terminal is going to benefit. Not, and you know something, if, if you really get down to the nitty-gritty, this not only benefits the town of Yarmouth, this benefits the other 50, I don't know how many municipal units we got now, the other.
Fifty-four. Fifty-three?
Two, one, 50, yeah. We'll round it down to 50. But this, this, this is, you know, this is benefits all the other municipal units right around the province. So, you know, I think the application with three units on it will, will go a long ways.
I agree.
But I'm glad that you had that conversation with the other units, Jeff.
Did you want to?
No, he, he.
If I could just comment on that, there are different, different subcategories within the new Build Canada Fund. One of them is small communities, and it's, it's a smaller portion of the money, but that's where we fit. However, there is, there is another pot that is, that is for provincial scope projects, and I think if, we should be politically lobbying that this project, because of the, the nature of it, it fits in the other pot. It's a larger pot of money, and I believe it, this project truly does fit in there. So we can make the effort politically to, to have the government consider it out of that pot. I think our chances might be greater, and, and it would, it would affect us less on other, other small communities fund, fund projects.
Good. Councillor?
Yeah, just to, and just to mention on that, too, that is something, I don't know, Phil, with UNSM, if I had a dollar for every resolution you and I put to UNSM in support of that ferry over the years, we'd be, be quite comfortable.
What about the resolutions?
Yeah, yeah, well, the other ones, too, yeah, the ones that you saw, the ones that we saw, when they came to the table. The, but is that something, Jeff, that maybe we could look at down the road, even a resolution to UNSM for the fall conference? I might craft something on that regard for council's consideration. But that may be something, you know, just to, even a general resolution along the idea that the municipal units generally support the activity of the Yarmouth Ferry and the maintenance of the service, like a reiteration of service and reiteration of support. Because as soon as you start talking dollars up there, they're all going to choke and die and gag. But basically, all we want to do is get that. That was question one. Question two, which is a quick one, I just wanted to get a quick refresher in my little pea brain on the other two projects. I wanted to make sure Argyle Street was still in the mix there, or is it not on the mix?
Go ahead.
No, Argyle Street isn't in the mix, because we don't have the capital project identified yet. We're doing, we're doing the studies right now in the infiltration and, and modeling of the, of the flooding. Once we have that information, then, then we'll get to the point of, okay, so what are the solutions? And, and then we'll be able to put a capital project together. At this point, the, the projects that were on the list were ones that were already on Mr. Ernst's list specified, I believe. One was, was the Glebe Parade Brunswick Storm Sewer Project, and the other one was, was Hawthorne, Hawthorne Street and, and down to the, down to the harbor as well. Stormwater projects. The Green Street Project isn't on that list, but it is, it is being done. So what this will mean is, if we're successful on, on any of these projects, is it will free up, you know, our, our own capital monies, gas tax, and so on, to focus on other projects, and Argyle Street's certainly one of those.
Good. So what are you looking for, for us? Anything? Just, that was just for information, or do you want to?
It's a damage.
What was the motion?
It was a damage motion. Is that the recommendation that he had?
Oh, sorry. Okay. That was moved and seconded. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Paving, yes? Certainly.
Just on that item, to your question about, about UNSM, and I'll, I'll do some asking within, through the bureaucratic channels about the fit of that particular project to this other category, and if they agree that that's where it will be considered, then we don't need to do the political bit. But if there's, if there's a little bit of gray area there, then I'll, I'll, I'll give you the indication.
No, I'm good. I'm just waiting for, I'm just on the hot seat for the next one, that's all.
Paving and concrete.
Paving tender approval. You're on, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, I know that you, you've had time to look at this, this contract, and I'm sure the other councillors had a half a time to look at it. I'm looking at Dexter's Construction and Aberdeen Paving Construction. I'm not making any accusation or any assumptions of that, but when you look at the pricing, if it's just for the sake of putting prices down, they're really high prices on Dexter reverses, you know, Aberdeen. Is there a way that we can verify the sets of difference in pricing? I know there's only two companies that, that bid, which, which is fine, but it's just, the prices are so, I mean, very much higher than the other ones. So I, I, I just want to make sure, and when you look at the increase over last year and, and this year, I know that petroleum and everything, you know, fluctuates up and down all the time, but we've got some big prices here, and I'm just wondering if it's just for the sake of... And I'm just wondering if it's just for the sake of putting prices down so the other one will have whatever, you know. Are you comfortable with this? Is there any way that we can check this before, is there any other, I guess, any other information we can get to make sure that the taxpayers of Yarmouth are getting the best price?
Go ahead, CAO, you're on.
Well, this is the best price that the taxpayers of Yarmouth have been offered through public tenders, so I think the reason that there's a difference, such a difference in these two companies, is that one has a local presence, and so it's perhaps easier for them to, more cost-effective. Maybe the other one is busy, and because this is patching and paving, this is not, you know, a major paving project, this is doing all the little patches. So to mobilize your resources to come into the area to do a bunch of patches may not be cost-effective to a busy company that isn't located in the area. So I think that's the reason that the engineer includes the rightmost column, which is the percentage increase over last year, so that you have some basis of comparison. And certainly, for the most part, the prices have gone up. For the most part, I think the increases are fairly modest or in the range that you would expect. There is one that's approaching 10% there, which is a little couple, I guess, that are approaching 10%. What this will mean is, because we budgeted the same amount for patch paving as we have in previous years, is that we'll get, you know, maybe, on average, maybe 2% to 5% less done this year compared to last year. So do I think the taxpayer is getting the best price? Well, they're getting the best price that was made available to us this year. And we have set a budget for it, and so we'll get a little less done this year than we did last year. But it's important that we continue to do this because this is what preserves the streets. Our streets aren't in that bad a shape, but this helps to lengthen the life of our asphalt.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and just a quick follow-up, and I appreciate that. And I took into consideration of Dexter's outfit, usually from Halifax, Darkin, wherever they're from, so they have hotels and all the other good stuff that they have to bring their people in, but that's fair. But I guess if we don't, if we just look at these and just say, okay, 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 without asking questions, and make it out there so the public will know that we are looking at these, our CAO is looking at these, and it is, as you see it right here, only two applied for the tender, and it is the best price that the taxpayers are getting. It's the only price that they're going to get because there's only two that apply for it. So I'm glad that you're on top of this and you're looking after it, and thank you for your information.
Good, okay. Is there a motion?
We have two.
Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. High school bursaries. How many did we get, Linda?
Two.
Two, we have two. Okay, go ahead.
We have two.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we, last year, we changed our bursary process, and so we created two bursaries, and the students will apply to the town of Yarmouth, and the decision will be made based on academic and extracurricular activities. Right now, we have two applications for two, but the deadline isn't upon us, there's another week, roughly. Question is, is how do you want to make those decisions?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. My question would be for Counselor Mooney.
Me?
Yeah. Counselor Mooney, when you sat in the mayor's chair a few years ago, there was an bursary that was given for Wendell Anthony at that time. Wasn't there an bursary that we had for Wendell Anthony? Then we set up something for him? Wasn't that a continuous, continuous year, or just the one year? Could you remember what it was? I think that one's done through the Liberal, I think that one was done through the Liberal Association. But I know the bursary that the town of Yarmouth's been involved over the last, since I've been here, I think they let Bobby Lou Reardon and Derek Lesser take care of the qualifications. But the Wendell Anthony one, I think, was through the Liberal Association.
So that was through our Liberal Association?
The other organization. That you used to be involved with.
Yeah, right, okay. Yeah, okay, I really wasn't sure. I thought it was around the stable, and I apologize for, you know, not having the correct information. Thank you.
Good, Counselor Langel?
Yeah, I like the, last year, we brought this up. I like the idea of having the town at least vet the applications, that when, your worship or whoever goes to present them to graduation, at least we have a little input on it. Having sat on the bursary slash application process at the school for years, you're kind of lumped into a pot if you don't do it. You know, some groups have been doing it on their own, and what happens is the names all come up, and they make sure that every kid gets something, kind of a thing. By us being able to vet the applications, I think it shows a certain amount of entrepreneurship on the part of the student to encourage them just to put an application in, at least shows, demonstrates some desire on their part. And I see no reason that maybe even a group of us could sit around someday and just decide the application, okay, this is the strongest merit. Basically, you're just doing a checklist, and usually the best comes surfaces at the top anyway, so. But it's generally based on, and I think our application was for a town resident, and it was, did we still, and refresh my memory, Jeff, at one point, we were looking at going into municipal government or going into some municipal thing, but I think we removed that requirement from it. But it was just based on need in many cases, what we were looking at.
CAO?
Excuse me. So the, this is the motion from last year? Okay, so the motion from last year was that two bursaries be approved in the amount of $750 each, and the bursaries be presented to a student applying to the town of Yarmouth based on need and academic qualification and extracurricular activities. So it doesn't specifically reference living in the town of Yarmouth. Maybe that was assumed, but it, so that's what the motion was. So what I would suggest is, maybe you get together on the 11th, I assume the school wants to know as soon as possible. If you can get together the next day after the deadline or sometime next week, whoever's interested from this group and make a decision, we can know fine.
I'm going to like this one. I'll make a motion, your worship, that myself, the mayor, and Counselor Langel sit on the bursary committee.
I like it, I said it to him yesterday.
Did anybody get into that one?
Okay, question, go ahead before the...
Yeah, just want to be clear that it's our intention, the committee will have the authority to make the final decision.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to come back.
Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. I'll call you gentlemen, if there's more than two. If there's no more than two, we'll go ahead. Okay, where are we? Okay. One, go ahead.
I didn't dare mention an addition at the top because we had seven items, I think, here for a 30-minute meeting. We did have a letter from Paulette Mitchell. It's looking for support for a new horizons application. It's a program that funds seniors groups. They're looking to put on a duplicate bridge. I guess the Duplicate Bridge Club is looking for some funds, purchase new tables, chairs, and the like. I could read it to you if you want, but they're looking for a letter of support, they're not looking for money.
I'll make that a letter of support.
Yep.
Okay.
David, what's that one?
Yeah, well, I...
He moved it. You seconded it? Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Anything else? Motion?
Maybe one, I should have maybe brought it up, but, nah, it's not too late. Me and Kenny are going to go downstairs for a meeting.
Half an hour ago.
All right. They'd do way better without us.
Can't imagine.
We're talking about, your worship, about, I think we put $150,000 aside this year in this year's budget for implementation or starting of the acoustics plan. Is there any, anything going there? Because I know we have a basket of needs that's in the provincial government now, and I wonder if there's a way we could piggyback those funds with our provincial counterparts.
I had that, okay, go ahead.
So on the acoustics plan, we have on Monday, on Monday, June 9th, at 10 o'clock, we have Rob LeBlanc is going to come in and go through the plan with us, because the plan was done before many of us, many of you were on council. And Rob did the report, he's the principal at acoustics, and he can speak to not only what the recommendations were, but he can speak to how they came about those recommendations, as well as his experience both before that report and since, in terms of successful downtown revitalization projects they've been involved in. So I've asked Rob to come in and do that, just so you would have the benefit of his experience. From there, I guess what we'd be looking for is some specific priority projects that you, as council, would like to support over the next couple of years.
Go ahead.
Monday at 10, and you'll send us a reminder again. And the other one is, just a couple of concerns about the marina itself and just the hierarchy there, has that been addressed?
Well, we haven't built the hierarchy yet. That was, we're working on it, we're working, no, we've, that operation's coming to operational services, and we have a staff person starting Monday. It is late, but we have a staff person starting Monday. We're still in the process of looking for a manager. That process is underway.
We've answered four.
For the marina.
Okay, so Paul's...
Paul's not coming back, no.
Okay. So you're going to start now? But, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'll talk to you about that afterwards, if you like, just where it's personnel matter.
Yeah.
Thank you, worship. On sarcastic planning, at this meeting, it's just an information meeting, I would like to think that we wouldn't make any decisions at that meeting to say where we're going or things we're going to pick out at that time. We should have some time to digest what the information is going to be given to us, and look at and schedule another meeting not too far down the road, like in June, we've still got plenty of time. And let us look at it, let us think about it, and make some notes, and let us discuss it at a next meeting. We shouldn't make any decisions. It's a lot of information, it's a big book, and I wouldn't like to see us go down that road. To me, it's like the 11th hour, 12th hour, sometime when we get in these heated debates and have long talkers like Counselor Langel and myself at times. Sometime, it gets a little frustrating, so if we could not, I wouldn't like to see us, and I'm only speaking for myself, make any commitments at that information meeting. Thank you.
That's fine. I'd like to see us also take a look at the acoustics plan before we even go into that meeting. Right? I mean, let's not go in blind and waste his time if we've got questions and stuff. Let's do that. Counselor Langel?
I've got one somewhere, but I don't know where it is.
If I can suggest, and further to what Phil was commenting, I know it's a cost. The actual books for council purposes is really the way to go, because the website is very hard to read it, because it's such, it's a really weird-sized document, you know, it's about yay big and ba yay, ya ba yay. And it's a beautiful document, but I really would urge that if some of us don't have the books themselves, that maybe we should make that effort to get the books to maybe to the CAO, for those of us who don't have it. I'm like Phil, I'm pretty sure I know where mine is, I've kept mine. But it might be an idea to get copies, because that's really the only way to look at it. I know I've tried it on the website, and it is a pain, not because the screen is so, whatever. The only comment, your worship, I want to make on it, we did receive an email from a concerned resident about the dust from the Zion Baptist Church. I just wanted to let council know that I have a dustometer that, living near the church in my yard, that attracts every bit of dust and gall manure in town. That's my sports car, and I want to assure you, it's minimal. I'm getting more dust from the pollen from the maple trees than I am from there. There was some dust in the area, I was there watching the demolition, there was not a lot of dust, and I think that's a little out of whack, and for little dust that may have come up, I was watching the whole group of it. There was some blowing, but the reality is, it will be raining on Thursday and Friday, and I think our washing system will be working quite nicely, so I just...
So, so, acoustics plans printed? We're doing that? Okay, we'll get those, and go ahead.
I'd just like to mention to, perhaps to CAO, the former counselors had these books. I know I had mine, and he has his, he has his. Would it be a good exercise, perhaps, to call the former counselors to see if they still have those books? Perhaps we could get it from them? No, I mean, I mean, Counselor, former Counselor Dairs, Counselor Pink, and Counselor, you know, McKenzie, and they might have those. I'm sure they do, and perhaps they would give them up.
I was just advised that so-and-so's is in my desk. He says, he says, the big desk there, I said, that's mine. I think I just lost mine. Yeah, that's good. Okay. Yeah, I think I'm going to go take a peek now. I might have two.
I think I may need one, I have a bunch of mine, so. It doesn't have to be the pretty one, I can take the black and white one.
Jim being toward, what are these two?
Jeff, before you looked for one for me, I had one.
What did you?
Because I was prior to the group a little while ago, I've loaned it out a couple times, I just have to remember where it is. I think I know where it is. So I made, so Linda, before you generate one for me?
Is the acoustics one distinct?
Yeah. I have a beachland, I have a mine, it's...
Okay.
I was planning to do it the other day, so...
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, motion to adjourn. All right. Patter, patter. Yeah.
It's a, it's a, you get, you get, it might be a great opportunity to pick it back to two points. You've got that ask and desire.
It's a shot.
That ripped down ass.
Right? What do you talk, just if you can piggyback that on the other one, if it does come back?
The question, yeah, I was looking at the recording, I was, I was looking to get that before I go back to this one.
Well, we know what you're requesting. The request for an acquire. That's the one between, that's the one between, that's the one between, that's the one between everyone, there's the, we're doing it to the, to the Great Street, that go from subway to this. It's going to be the same size, it's, 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 because one of these days, it might not be next year. They're really, you know...
There's always been talk of perhaps putting a street.
Yeah. And then, yeah. Not this year, but in the next couple of years, it probably will.
That was for, I know that that's, I know that's, it's free.
Originally, and this was identified, I think, to the active transportation. And you can see, you can see all the kids in traffic between those two locations, right? And the part that came in originally was, so, I didn't want to do the project, or I don't think, we didn't want to do the project unless the thing was paved and ready to go. They said, God, once it was seen in proportion, and through all the engineering, it'll be ready to lay it down, paved, it's, it's, it's...
Because, we're telling them, you know, stop the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just the kids, and, 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 right, so, it's good, you can see the kids, they're gravitating to one of these places, and that's a lot of...